Go ahead and start the March 13th City Council meeting and we will begin with roll call.
Jenny.
Walters.
Here.
DeBorak.
Here.
Sarchet.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Item three, approval of agenda. I'll ask for a motion in a second.
Move. Second.
And roll call.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Item four is a series of public meetings. It's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the proposal to enter into an essential purpose loan agreement. When was the notice published Jenny?
March 3rd.
Have we had any written comments received for or against the proposal?
Yes, I have provided that to you on the dais.
Okay. Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the proposal? Hearing none. I need a motion to close the public hearing. Did you want to present on that first anything?
Yeah, I will just give a general review quick. This public hearing is on a proposal to enter into a loan agreement not to exceed $1,850,000 and to repay back the loan with proceeds from the debt service levy. The projects proposed to be funded by this loan agreement are the Northside Drive realignment and trail project, the city's annual street repair project, connecting trail gaps along Bridge Road, and purchasing and outfitting police vehicles.
Okay, so then I need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting. We will not be taking action on this item until after public hearing for B. So a motion please. A second. Second, and a roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Sarchet.
Yes.
So moving on to B then, it's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the proposal to enter into urban renewal loan agreement. When was the notice published?
March 3rd.
Have we had any written comments received for or against the proposal?
The same written comment from the other hearing.
Okay, thank you. And at this time, I'd like to request staff to provide a report.
This public hearing is on a proposal to enter into an urban renewal loan agreement not to exceed $1,750,000 and to repay back the loan with proceeds from the debt service levy. The projects proposed to be funded by this loan agreement are the City Hall Community Center project. After the public hearing for 4B, the City Council will consider a resolution to approve taking additional actions on the loan agreement, combining the two loan agreements, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay loan agreements.
Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the proposal? Hearing none, I need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
Second.
And roll call.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
So then we'll move on to B1, Resolution 2023-28, taking additional action on proposals to enter into loan agreements, combining loan agreements, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same. I'll ask for a motion in a second and then any discussion from council members. Motion please. And a second.
Sorry.
Any discussion?
Yeah, so Chelsea, could you reconcile that the figures you gave for A total differently than what you gave for B1, or did I miss something? So I get where we're going, I'm gonna be clear on, we're funding City Hall trail projects, police vehicles, and city and the total amount is, is it the 1.8 or 1.7?
So the first loan agreement, yep, for the first public hearing, it is to fund essential corporate purpose projects.
That's 1.8.
That is 1.85. For the second public hearing, that is for an urban renewal loan agreement, which falls under general corporate purpose, and that is 1.75. So a total loan amount of 3.6 million.
Yep, okay, thank you. And the difference between general and essential is?
The authority to approve the projects.
Okay.
So.
So when we say that something is general, that is tied to our general fund and debt authority, what's the difference then for essential? That's one of the new pieces to me, I guess.
General is your typical city infrastructure projects, roadways, water, sewer, equipment. Essential is, or I'm sorry, that was essential. General corporate purpose is your not essential projects, rec centers, facilities, anything like that. Now, essential is always subject to reverse referendum and as is general.
Still not seen. I mean, I understand.
It's the authority that you're approving the loans. So it's a different manner you go about to approve.
Okay. And these will be financed together or separate?
It will be, it'll be put together in one loan agreement, but you have to have separate public hearings for the two items.
So there's no funding or interest advantage to either one?
No.
It's required.
Because they're broken down in the Iowa code that way.
Okay.
Between general and essential.
Okay.
So if I understood what you said, the citizens could petition to have it vote on this?
Yes.
They could. They get out and gather signature.
Yes.
It's over there. One thing I haven't heard, which we always talked about in the past, whenever we did something like this, is what the impact would be on the average taxpayer. That came up and I missed it, I apologize.
Yeah, I don't have that information for you right this minute, but I can get that to you. This is also a do not exceed amount. These are all high numbers, so we will reduce the amount if we need to. And this is also the first step in the borrowing process, so there are additional steps we will take in the coming.
And it's not really for me, it's for the public out there, so they know. I want them, if they ask me, I figure that out. I think it's essential that they know that's cost on the tax.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second and a roll, and ask for roll.
Walters.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Moving on to C then, it's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the proposed action to institute proceedings to enter into a water revenue loan and dispersment agreement. When was the notice published Jenny?
March 3rd.
Have we had any written comments received for or against the proposed action?
No, sir.
At this time, we'll have a staff report.
This public hearing is regarding a proposal to enter into a water loan and dispersment agreement for the planning, design for the city's water tower project in the amount of $407,000. The loan agreement will cover the city's planning and design costs for the water tower project at 0% interest for up to three years. If the city enters into a loan agreement with the same lender by the maturity date, the lender may provide for the repayment in full of this project, which would be used for construction of the water tower.
Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the proposed action? I need a motion then to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting. And roll call.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
DeBorak.
So we'll move on to C1 then, Resolution 2023-29, taking additional action with respect to a water revenue loan and dispersment agreement and authorizing, approving, and securing the payment of $407,000 water revenue loan and dispersment agreement anticipation project note, IFA interim loan and dispersment agreement. So I'll ask for a motion in a second and then any council discussion. Motion please.
Second.
Second, we've had a second. Any discussion amongst council members?
Could you read?
Yeah. I did pretty good. Okay, then I guess what we will do is ask for a roll call.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Moving on to D, it's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the 2023 street repairs project. When was the notice published Jenny?
March 3rd.
Have we had any written comments for or against the proposed project?
No, sir.
At this time, we'd like to request staff to provide a report. Lee, that is Travis.
Yes, council for your consideration tonight is, are the project plans and a proposed contract for the 2023 street repairs project on Wednesday, March 8th, we held a bid opening here in the council chambers. It yielded two bids, with the low bid being Brothers Concrete. Today, we are recommending that you accept not just the base bid, but the free additive bid all in, which would total $128,781, which would be approximately $73,000 under our engineers estimate, estimate of project group. And fits within the budget set forth by Public Works and Chelsea.
You have any questions? I'd be happy to answer those.
So as excited as I am about that number, you or Mike were comfortable in their expertise, willingness to show up when they say they're going to do all of those things.
So we have done, we have done trail projects with them in the past, and our engineers said they had no negative complaints. Brothers did what they needed to do, did what they were asked, understood it's due also. It's not, what it sounds like is it's a, it's a company that primarily specialized in residential driveways, patios, and flat work, and they're wanting to get into the public space. And so I think they're just giving cities really good prices to get a shot, so that they can establish some references and then get their name there.
That kind of answers my question then, because I was gonna ask if they've ever done work in a city before. But we're still coming.
Competition's good though. We get another credible.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that, but.
No, I'm.
I'm a fuck.
EBD, right?
I'm a probably work, we've had in the past, but it does probably work. Were they a lot lower than everybody else?
Substantially. The second bidder was over our engineers estimate.
Was?
Over our engineers estimate, the number I know. The contractor that was the second bidder traditionally is higher in our experiences.
Now it's not the time of year, Ron, to be getting in the way of filling pockets.
Kind of scary that that's that much lower. But if you guys are comfortable, who am I? I just try not to ride my bike through them.
Okay then, we will then move on to D1, our brother, we need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
I'll move. Second.
And roll call please.
Anderson.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
You thought you were gonna catch me there, didn't you Jenny?
I was holding my tongue.
I saw your head nodding. So we'll move on to D1, which is Resolution 2023-30, adopting plans.
Sorry, you mean, we're two different resolutions, one for, because of the alternates?
No, one, you're adopting the plans. The, again, these are Iowa code requirements. Your first step is to adopt the plans, and then your second one is to award the contract.
Okay, including the alternates, and that doesn't change, which is part of the contract?
They're part of the contract, that's correct, yep.
And you will have a third resolution at the next meeting?
On the contract at the next.
Not to confuse you.
We just chose to do it this way because there are additive bid alternates, and would be within your rights to say no, no, actually. So we didn't want the contract to go extra if that discussion came.
Okay, so Resolution 2023-30, adopting plans. I'll ask for a motion please. And a second.
Second.
And is there any further discussion? Roll call.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
So then let's move on to D2, Resolution 2023-31, awarding contract. Motion please. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Moving on to item five, this is the time and place for comments from any item other than those that are a public hearing. Have we had anyone who has signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Okay, then we will move on then to item number six, which is our consent items, and I will ask for a motion to approve the consent items. And a second. Second.
Second.
And any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about item F. We aren't gonna have to use that anymore this year, are we?
So if there's no further discussion, we'll, we'll call the roll.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Walters.
Yeah.
Let's move on to item seven then, business items, A, City Hall slash community room project. Travis, you're gonna present?
Yes, so your consideration tonight is approving the platte survey. Essentially, that action will help to clean up some of the lot lines, vacated alleyways, all that kind of stuff that will be used across the street to construct the City Hall slash community center. It is essentially a cleanup item that is sometimes taken care of with a record of lot tie, basically tying multiple lots together. However, this is a long-term, permanent solution, or a permanent infrastructure sort of that's going on there, that's going to occupy all four of those lots plus the vacated alleyways. This cleans it up, it makes it simple, and it's very permanent. And then also for your consideration is approval of the site plan. The site plan preparer has addressed all of our requirements.
Okay, so we will then move on to A1, which is Resolution 2023-34, approving the platte survey. We'll have a motion in a second. Any discussion? So a motion please.
So move.
And a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, so because we're doing this on the same meeting as our third reading of the rezoning, do I? What? Second reading? Yes. Is it, so the platte survey is, well, both pieces actually more, the C1 to U1 would have no impact on either the platte survey or the site plan?
Right, you could do the platte survey no matter what the zoning is.
Okay.
And the site plan, there, it's, you could still approve a thing, the building, the building permit won't be approved until the rezoning probably is, but you could still approve the site plan. It just, it'll just be sitting there until the other things are in place.
Okay, so it, it isn't accurate to say that the changes would be fine whether it was C1 or U? It's going to be U1, so that's what we're approving it as. I just, I don't, I'm good with this. I just want to be clear that we're not jamming things that typically would be separated out into different meetings.
And your site plan approved expires over, at a certain point of time if it's not used anyway. So if for some reason you didn't rezone and you didn't proceed with the site plan, it is going to expire by code at some point in the future anyway.
I get that. I'm just saying, so typically, and there's a lot of reasons, because there's developers that are doing the work as opposed to City Hall, but the rezoning runs its course, and then the plating and site plan runs its course separately. So we're doing them together, and I want to be clear to say that that doesn't, doing it in one meeting rather than in two doesn't change what's happening, nor does it give any, any less opportunity to weigh in. I mean, they're separate motions, so.
That is correct. It is fine, and it does not give, it does not, people still have the opportunity to weigh in now if they choose to do so. Nothing is, it's not going to change anything. And we've done it before, run things concurrently. It's, it's probably not typical, but it's definitely not out of the ordinary either.
And you're.
Well, it's gonna be out of the ordinary. When was the last time we did City Hall?
Well, but for that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But for the type, but for the project itself, but each project, you know, developers' projects are unique to, to particular properties, so.
Good point. Sorry.
And then I should have mentioned this previously, but your approval is subject to zoning group. So if for whatever reason, reason that rezoning doesn't go through, the site plan comes back, and then you would have to approve again. So really, we're just setting it up so that if that's, that rezoning is finished, and when it's ready to go, you would then apply for it.
I thought that the City Hall could go on that lot as it was zoned.
It can.
So you don't have to approve the rezoning at all.
Yep.
And you would still build the City Hall. So we're doing this for a housekeeping purpose, not so that we can build the City Hall, if that makes sense.
The rezoning.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. And I fully get that.
Okay.
It's just the cadence of, you know, one, two, three rezoning for the readings.
And typically, we don't have a rezoning go through if you don't need it to have a site plan. They would just do the site plan. So that's also a little bit out of the norm, because we're rezoning something that doesn't really need to be rezoned, other than to make everything as clean as possible.
Yeah. Are you saying the perception could potentially be that we're trying to expedite things in a non-particular?
I just wanted to talk it through in a non-legalese way. Steve asked me to stretch out the meeting like he did the work session.
That's in two days.
Oh, okay.
But, you know, in all seriousness, I should talk about this, but I just wanted to be clear that nothing's out of the ordinary, and I am comparing apples to oranges with a residential development to something like this, because they're gonna ask for a rezoning and then build their plans once that goes through, whereas, and like Jenny said, the rezoning here doesn't change the plans, other than to have them properly listed as they should be for the intended use, although the fact that that was commercial residential on it or didn't find it either, so, I just.
All that's to say from a legal standpoint, you're fine.
I've never heard that before. I don't know how to.
So with that, let's call the.
Walters.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Sarchet. Anderson.
Yes. Before we move on, if I could, not only has it been a long time since we approved the site plan for City Hall, we've never approved the site plan for City Hall. The old City Hall was in a schoolhouse, this one's in an old fire station, so this is our first ever site plan for City Hall.
Okay, so let's move on to item A2, Resolution 2023-35, approving the site plan. I'll ask for a motion in a second. And any discussion, further discussion? If none, let's call the roll please.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
DeBorak.
7B, second reading of ordinance 2023-4000, approving rezoning of property owned by the city of Polk City located at 214 South Third Street and 302 West Van Dorn Street from C1 Central Business District to U1 Utility District. Motion please.
Move.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Let's move on then to item eight, reports and particulars, and we will begin with staff, please. Anything? Okay, Chelsea?
I do, I have two things. I just wanted to remind people that are interested in the Spring Citizens Academy. We are accepting applications, and that begins April 6th. Information on that can be found on the city's website. And then the city's been awarded another round of funding for a citywide soil quality restoration project. It was two years ago in Polk City. So the city is going to receive $95,000 to help reduce the cost to homeowners interested in participating in a city soil quality restoration project. More information will come on this topic. We're estimating that the project will take place in the fall.
Okay, thank you. Council members, begin over here, anything?
I have a question. Do we do have a sundown on the site plans?
Yes, I think it's a year.
Huh?
I think it's a year. I can confirm, but I'm pretty sure it's a year.
But I'm pretty sure it's a year also.
Preliminary plots are the same way.
Anything on this side?
Yeah, I, I just, you know, there was a lot on here, and again, I don't think the last discussion on platte survey was a great example, but I did have somebody that came to the meeting follow up, and I had a great discussion about some of the things that we're trying to do, and it's, I assume that, you know, we've been, we're a part of these meetings, and remember the budget from last year and the other projects and capital improvement stuff, and, you know, don't always clearly state things in a way for somebody who's moved here within the last couple of years, and there's a lot of those people, and that was the case with this gentleman. So if you do have any questions on things, we're happy to talk through them, and let's have a good discussion. I think there were some points that didn't land as, as all of them would, but love hearing feedback, especially, again, people who have been elsewhere where things are structured significantly different, getting up to speed on how things work in Iowa or in central Iowa. So again, there's discussions, or people have thoughts, maybe not to the extent of destroying my credibility, our credibility as was stated in the letter, but constructive ones, certainly interesting.
I'd be open to destructive ones. If there's a point, I mean, I'm not saying I'm always right. So if people have other points of opinion, please bring them, because I'm, we're all human, right? So I mean, of course, we like constructive, but also we're not gonna learn anything unless we hear the opposite as well, to some point. And if you accuse me of not being loyal to the taxpayers or being.
Constructive can be, hey, did you think about this, or why don't you think about this?
Our credibility, yeah. That, there's where the rubber hits the road with me when you start talking about credibility and trust and what I'm, because it's, I live here as one, right? So I have no reason to, do what's best for all the taxpayers.
Thank you.
I'd like to add one more thing. I hope people get, apply for the Citizens Academy. I hope we have, it's full, lots of people taking interest. I hope it's a very worthwhile deal. It's about 10 minutes before it's enjoyed it, learned a lot. Hope that continues.
So the only thing that I would add is, I publicly at one of our meetings asked some people to join me in putting together the Iowa Great Places application. Three of those people are here, Jeff and Dave and Chelsea, the other one was Monica Converse from Go Polk City. And we sent in our application last Thursday, while collectively, we, Chelsea sent it in a day ahead of schedule, and we're very proud of the document that came out of all that work, not only from Core Committee, but much wider advisory committee. So thanks to Core Committee and the Advisory Committee. And now we wait to hear whether we qualify as an Iowa Great Places community in June. So we'll be looking forward to that date. So just wanted to, to mention that. And with that, we'll move on to number nine, which is closed session under Code of Iowa, Chapter 21, and I will have to ask for a motion to go into closed session, please. And a second. Roll.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Walters.
Yeah. Great. So anyone not invited? Great, so anyone not invited to participate in the closed session, thank you very much for being here this evening.